Agenda.
Administration has no additions today.
Okay, so what about, are these already in here?
The additional material is captured.
Okay.
Item six, two, three, and four.
Okay, it's all in there, perfect. Is there anybody that would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Colin? Thank you, all in favor? That is carried, moving along to 3.0, corrections or amendments. 3.1, November 24, 2021, regular meeting of council minutes. 3.2, November 24, 2021, public hearing meeting minutes, combative sports commission bylaw 2021-12C. 3.3, November 24, 2021, public hearing meeting minutes, development permit DV 21-057, discretionary use at 5621 58th Avenue. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion to adopt these minutes as presented for November 24, 2021, regular meeting of council minutes? November 24, 2021, public hearing meeting minutes, combative sports commission bylaw 2021-12C. November 24, 2021, public hearing meeting minutes, development permit DV 21-057, discretionary use at 5621 58th Avenue? Thank you very much for that, Tom, all in favor? That is carried. So we'll move to 5.1, our first delegation, Drayton Valley RCMP stats, and I don't, oh, you are there. Well, welcome. You're out of uniform today, you look lovely. You do look lovely all the time, thank you for coming this morning.
Yeah, I like how you always, you know, put me first since I asked you to.
I know, right? We hear what you're saying.
Yeah, so, yeah, the statistics, I've been seeing you guys a lot lately. The statistics that I sent, again, I'm just going to go over some of the more important or ones that we saw some jumps in. One of them was the damage to property mischief, basically. And it was, basically, we jumped up from 10 in 2020 in November to 24 this past November. A lot of those were suspicious persons, people checking vehicles, doors, that type of thing. There was also some with the youth at the schools. We've had some issues with surrounding TikTok and some things that are happening with the youth at the schools and them thinking that it's rather funny to be damaging properties and that type of thing, so. We're looking at getting, actually going in there and having some meetings with the students in the new year, kind of giving them some information as far as this type of stuff is not what you should be doing and the possible consequences surrounding them, so. We had, one person was responsible for eight of those reports, and they have been charged. And we also had three other charges on those damage to property mischief. The obstruction, enjoyment of property mischiefs, well, those, of course, kind of came down to a lot of our homeless issues where they were in sleeping in vestibules, staircases, stairwells, that type of thing, just trying to keep warm. So I'm happy to see that the MAT program actually is up and running. It's a good thing, they have someplace to go now, and we have someplace where we can also take them when we locate them. Other than that, everything is pretty much the same. We had 10 mental health calls, and we transported three in November, so. Everything else is pretty much on par with what it has been in the past, no big surprises or jumps, so. Yeah, do you have any questions?
Bill?
Thank you, I noticed your well-being checks are up.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, is this related to homelessness, or is it related to COVID?
It's probably more related to COVID, not so much the homeless. We have had a couple of well-being checks on those individuals, but it is usually, we have people, I haven't heard from them in a couple of weeks, usually they call me all the time, so we punk them down and check on them, make sure that they're okay, and usually it's just they just don't want to talk to the person, so, but. Oh, yeah, yeah. We haven't had any that have caused us any concern.
You shut your mic off, Bill? Tom?
Oh. Good morning, Sergeant Matthews. Do we still have the resource officer in the schools?
Well, the school resource officer, the SERO, CSRO, left in September. They went to another job in headquarters. We do have another one that has been named from the detachment who will be taking over probably around mid-February, but in order to, what we have done in the, since September, basically, is I assigned everybody schools, and they go to those schools and they're actually doing a great job. They've actually been pretty phenomenal from the reports I've been getting, so.
Well, I did have a chance to meet two or three of the newer recruits, and they were down for pictures with Santa, and so they have a ton of fun, and that's exactly what we need.
Yep, no, it's a great crew. And we have two new ones coming, one in January and one in February as well, so.
Good, good. So I wanted to just go back to the TikTok issue, so when you say six, was that, one person was charged with six or eight things, was that in relation to that?
No, it wasn't, it was in relation to something else.
Okay. So in that TikTok thing, you're going, the idea is to go into the schools, conversations about why it's not good to do those things?
Yes, exactly, and possible consequences surrounding it. You know, so, because it was out of control there.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you very much for that, are there any other questions? There is not, we are a quiet bunch today.
Yeah, well, I hope, wish you all a very happy holidays and hope you have a safe and happy, Merry Christmas, so.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you in the new year.
Yes, happy, happy holidays to you and a Merry Christmas to you and everybody, everybody at the detachment, thank you, I was like, what is the word I'm looking for? And thanks for giving us an update, Merry Christmas. So moving on to 5.2, we have another delegation here, I am not sure, I don't see another gentleman, David, here in the room. I know that the conditions are a little bit, maybe not the best out there, so we'll move along maybe into our decision items, and then if he ends up coming in the next little bit, we can always jump back to 5.2. So moving along to our decision item, 6.1, Opportunity Home Treatment and Recovery Center, draft rezoning bylaw 2021-10D, presented for first reading. And Ken, thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, worship and council, my intent this morning is to present a proposed land use bylaw, redistricting bylaw for first reading. The town received an application to utilize the parcel at 5219 53rd Avenue as a permanent location for the proposed Opportunity Home Addictions Treatment and Recovery Center. The proposed bylaw 2021-10D will redistrict this parcel from general commercial district to special community service district. The purpose of this redistricting is to allow the permitted, or a permitted use in the bylaw called care facility medical, which the addiction treatment recovery center is characterized as or defined as. The redistricting is necessary because this care facility medical use is neither permitted or discretionary use in the current general commercial district. So that's, our purpose today is to have first reading for this bylaw to kick off the process. The applicant is a not-for-profit organization whose mission is to support vulnerable individuals in the community, those battling with addictions, providing a safe home coupled with mental, psychological, and spiritual support as they navigate the road to recovery. The location is a very suitable spot for this type of land use as it's adjacent on the fringe of the downtown area, which offers a multitude of commercial and community services within walking distance. And with that, administration recommends that council give first reading to redistricting bylaw 2021-10D. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Ken, are there any questions for administration? Bill?
I just have one question of administration, I was not present for the public hearing, so I'm not sure if I can vote on this first reading or this reading.
This is first reading, we haven't had a public hearing. There hasn't been a public hearing.
Not on this one.
Bylaw, sorry.
This is first reading today of this bylaw, there hasn't been a public hearing on this.
What was the minutes?
Are you thinking of something else maybe, Bill?
So what was the public minutes on the development permit DV 21067?
I believe that was for a cannabis store.
Well, that was different?
Yeah, that was different. Yeah, the public hearing and the second and third reading is planned for January 19th next year.
Are there any other questions? Okay, would you like to make a motion, thank you?
I move that council give first reading to proposed rezoning bylaw 2021-10D as presented.
Thank you for that, are there any comments, questions, or debate on the motion?
Just.
Amila?
Thank you. Just to understand for the, for everyone, I guess, who's hearing as well, could you explain a little bit about what's proposed and what's coming?
Oh, okay, there, why this site's so attractive is that the existing building is oriented, it has a number of offices that can be easily converted into kind of room units or bedrooms that they would stay in. Basically, the philosophy is that, or the design of this building is that they'll have a common space and then a number of bedroom units where they would stay. I'm not exactly sure how restrictive they're going to be, usually, the one, I've designed some of these buildings in the past, and some of them are like, once you go in, you don't go out, and they actually lock you in your room, and they have windows that they monitor you, I'm not sure what their operations are, so there's, I guess, a continuum of how restrictive they will be in terms of keeping these people on site, but, but they're providing the service, it's a 90-day program, and at the end of this 90 days, then they even be recovered or the process is complete. So everything would be done on-site, contained in-site.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, yeah, I'll just add that I think this is a great opportunity for our community, I think that it's something that definitely is needed when dealing with addictions, and so it's nice to see, I had a chance to sit with a couple of the board members and answer some questions and have a little bit of conversation about what the proposal of this, this opportunity home is, and also just to, just to get a better understanding too of working together, and there's a lot of groups, organizations, and individuals right now that are looking at reducing homelessness and poverty and dealing with addictions and mental health, so one of the things going forward is I think that making sure that we're not duplicating services or working against each other, and making sure that, I think that there's room for everybody to do, move forward their ideas and plans, and just to kind of work in unity together and make sure that we're offering the services and resources that our community really needs, so this is really, yeah, this is something that I can definitely get behind, and I'm happy to see come to the community. Tom, did you want to add anything?
Just, can you remind me of the process, so we're saying we're going, we're first reading today, then we will fan out with information to adjacent landowners within a certain set of meters, can you just remind me of that process?
Yes, through the chair, to Council McGee, yeah, that is the process, a first reading is, is kind of the first step in the redistricting. After first reading is given by council, we have notification letters that go out to everyone within 100 meters of the site, and then it explains, these letters explain the purpose, what this facility will be, da-da-da-da, and then we also have ads that will go out in the news, local newspaper and online, our website for the public hearing on the 19th, that'll advertise that, and then on the 19th, we'll bring, we'll bring another report forward to council that will address the public hearing and second and third reading.
Ads are interesting, because ads, sometimes you look through them and you just, they just, like, have no idea where that is, it's some land use somewhere, who cares, right? So we don't get a lot of input from folks, the notification letters are generally the better part of it, but sometimes I wonder about our, our advertising of those types of things, whether we could improve that a little bit, and I don't, I don't know, it's legal, it does what it does, but.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not exactly a science, public engagement, generally, the notification letters will get to the people that are immediately in the vicinity and will be affected. The ads are kind of a balancing act between how much information and mapping you can put on a, on an ad in a newspaper, but it does reach a more general population and website and online, I think there's another online service we, we posting these things, these ads to on a, it's basis, so the people, I guess, looking for these ads would know where they are.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, nothing else? Oh, Monica?
Just a question, how many people can be treated at one time, or how many people can a house?
Looking at the site, I think there's rooms for about 30 or 40 people, so that would be about their maximum.
So the motion on the table is that council give first reading to proposed rezoning, Amila?
Thank you, just again about the sustainability of the program, so this is a, I guess, a community organization who's gonna run the operations and move this forward, right? So there's no burden per se to the town beyond that.
Yeah, through to Council, my understanding, it's a board-like community organization that will run the, the organization, not a private individual or company.
Okay, now that's it, okay, so Bill made a motion that council give first reading to proposed rezoning bylaw 2021-10D as presented, I'll ask the question, all in favor? That is carried, so what I think we'll do is, we see you here now, David, I think we will jump back to our delegation 5.2. Good morning, Mr. Schenk, how are you? Good, so we'd like you to come down, and you're here today to speak to council? Did you want to come, yeah, if you want to come down, is it easier for you to come to the chair or to the mic? We can just, that way, we have a few people online listening, that way everybody gets a chance to hear what you're saying, because we know it's important. And good morning again, Brad, I just wanted to say you're just here just to listen to council today, because I'm not seeing any combative sports, anything on the, it's on the minutes like to be for corrections or amendments, but not as a decision item today. We just thought maybe you were really excited to see us and wanted to spend the morning with us, so I thought I better say something. You're welcome to stay.
So.
Thanks for coming, Merry Christmas.
Oh, okay. Am I not too loud? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Well, good morning, thank you very much for coming.
Oh, thank you. My main concern is, I live on 49th Avenue, my main concern is the ice on that street, it's terrible to ride a scooter on, and I can't ride on sidewalks because they're not half-shovelled, so that's my main concern.
Yeah, it's getting a little bit harder to get around out there for sure, especially with the snow piling up, definitely.
I'm going to break down right now, but it'll be fixed in a day or two.
Okay, are there any questions this morning for David? Tom?
I see David every day, as he's out and about, and he has, in the summertime, it's, it seems to work just fine, we get into winter and it's a little tougher, and I, I have a friend, I would say, that is in long-term care, and his name is David Hagan, and David comes down from long-term care to get some smokes now at the smoke shop, and he does that.
Whatever.
That turn, and, but he comes a long ways, and the problem that, that he has is the same problem that you have, is our snow clearing, and, you know, if you, if you got a ramp, it's just piled, it'll get piled with snow, but we, but, so I think the, the issue that we're faced with, I think, excuse me, is the, is the, the way we, we do, not the way we do the work, but it's, it's getting the service, like, immediately do we jump and do that, or immediately do we jump and do that, do we do the main roads and things like that, so you, you probably have had a discussion with our public works and.
I did, yeah.
Yeah, and that wasn't all that satisfactory to you, but I think while we're addressing it though, and I did, I did talk to David last night in long-term care, and he said, it's snow and I, I'm not coming downtown, because that's the only way he's got, so.
The first time that sweeper went with the, down the sidewalk, he'd come to the, to the end of the sidewalk and lift the broom and leave a big pile there, well, you can't get over that once it's froze with a scooter. If you left it down and go across the sidewalk, across the entrance or whatever was there, back alley or driveway or whatever, and clean that off, it'd be good going, but every time you come to the end of a sidewalk, there's a pile of dirt and gravel there and, and snow and stuff, and the same at the very far end, they pushed up there with a loader after the grader, so you gotta stay on the street, and it's so humpity bumpity that you think you're gonna upset at times.
So it seems to me sometimes it's, it's the awareness of what you, what's out there, right?
But they should be down there now soon, because there are gonna be a pile of snow coming now.
Yeah, but I'm thinking more about the awareness of, of what you have to go through, and so it's not.
Yeah, right.
It's not from, you know, I can try to understand it better, but you know it better than anybody, so if I look to our public works, I think they need to sometimes just understand what it takes now, mentally, it's, it's just a culture thing, right, you just, I'm just.
You have to watch what you're doing, you have to watch what you're doing on scooter.
Yep, so I, Owen, I don't know if you, if you want to respond or anything, but for me, it's, it's really just, as I've always said, is that just get, if I'm mentally in the chair of that snow removal person, am I thinking about David and David and, and the folks that come down, but if I, sometimes you don't, because you're in a hurry, not in a hurry, you're, you're trying to get the job done, and that's just one of the things we overlook, so I don't know, how would you make a presentation to your, to your folks about that issue?
Owen, sorry, if, if I could, to Council McGee through the chair, so it, Public Works didn't prepare a presentation for today, we're waiting to hear Mr. Schenk's comments. As council knows, we're currently reviewing the snow removal bylaw and will look at a number of those issues, but we're certainly aware of the concerns and we'll do what we can to address them when we reevaluate the, the snow removal process.
Perfect, yeah, I think, I think you're right, Tom, is that, you know, we go about our, our busy lives and we're in our cars or we're walking, and then when you think, you know, if you're actually trying to access and get through the community on a scooter or a wheelchair or, you know, a walker or something, it's going to be a bit more difficult, and you're looking from getting off the road to the sidewalk and things like that, so I think it is mindful to look at, you know, situations through the eyes of others and how they might be traveling and getting around our town, but as our CAO had said, it has come to our public works and we're going to be reviewing it and looking at ways that we can mitigate this and make sure that we're assisting you and others in the community, and we really appreciate you coming today, and without you coming, we don't know things like this, right?
What?
Without you coming, we don't, we don't get an opportunity to hear things like this, right? So we appreciate you coming and voicing your concerns, so then we're aware of it and we can work towards an action plan that we can help mitigate it, right?
Right, I've also, I'm a leader at the drop-in center, for the time being, till January for sure, but they have an issue with the carpet lady there and the flower shop, all our customers are parking on that street down there, all the way to the corner, even in the handicap one, and them two companies are complaining to us to try and get it out there, but we need another sign there saying that that's for private property only, or for the customers only, if that would be possible.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head what's there for signage, if it says two-hour customer parking or not, but that's another thing that we can definitely add to our list for review.
And then I volunteer at Hillbillies, and that, they got apartments upstairs, and there's vehicles parked there all day long, never moved, they should be someplace else, if it's possible.
Yeah, and we do, we do have a public parking lot that's just adjacent to that, just.
Well, it is kitty corner up there, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that, are there any other questions before David gets on his way? No? Well, thank you again for coming, happy holidays and we'll see you again.
Can I sit in for a while yet?
Absolutely, you can sit in, yeah, we're gonna be here for a couple hours, so you're more than welcome.
Well, I don't know if I'll be that long.
To stay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kate, we'll move back to our decision items and we will move to 6.2, our 2022 fee schedule. Ms. Thompson, come on down.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
All right, time has come to approve the fee schedule. Administration from each town facility and department has reviewed its respective fees for the coming year, the 2022 final fee schedule reflects the town's goal to provide affordable services while balancing fiscal responsibility and where possible achieve cost recovery. Administration presents the attached 2022 final fee schedule for council's consideration and adoption with the intention the fees be implemented on January 1st of 2022. And just to add that the only changes from the presentation on Monday was the, were the ECDC fee schedules, our fees, the ECDC fees, I updated those to 1,200 as was the direction from council, and I adjusted the electronic fee sign, or electronic sign fee, other than that, it's exactly as presented on Monday.
Perfect, thank you very much for that, are there any questions for administration?
Sorry, I just, I just noticed the, just trying to make sure that the, the full fee schedule, yeah, excluding, this one excludes the ECDC, so Amila's can sit in on this, I totally forgot that we separate the ECDC fees schedule from everything else, so this is the, everything but the ECDC fees.
Okay, perfect, thank you for that.
Just for my clarification, if I may, so again, this is not regarding salaries, right, the pre-fee schedule, is it considered a secondary interest? That's, that's the case?
So, so the activity today is the approval of the rates that the users of the facility pay, so I don't, I don't believe that it presents a pecuniary interest to you, they are the same rates provided to the entire community, and so I, I mean, the, the decision whether or not a pecuniary interest exists is, is yours, but I would agree that. Um, but I would agree that uh the approval of the rates uh wouldn't normally qualify as a pecuniary interest.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions for administration? No question? Is there a member of Council that would like to make a motion?
Your worship, uh, I would make a motion that Town Council approve the twenty twenty-two fee schedule as presented by the administration this morning.
Thank you for that. Any comments, questions, or debate on the motion?
Uh, one point that I would make, and and it it seems like it's an easy, quick motion, but I forget that there are people online. Um, but we did spend a considerable amount of time having discussions um in in our last meeting on Monday. And so, um, just so people are aware that it's 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 not an easy job to to set these fees. Um, but here we are today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Deputy Mayor. Did you have something to add?
No, I was just moving on already.
You're just excited to go. Okay, then, I will ask the question, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much for that. So moving on to six point three, twenty twenty-two interim operating budget.
Sorry, because we separated the motions out for the E C D C, we're gonna have to do that second motion.
Um, okay.
Uh, if even if there is not a pecu- pecuniary interest, we'll just do the second motion as well for the E C D C fee schedule.
Okay, so the motion is up there then?
Yes, it is.
Okay, is there anything that you would like to add before I um ask any questions?
I just would, just that on Monday, we debated and not debated, deliberated uh what the new fees should be going into January of twenty twenty-two. And at the direction of Council, we set the fees at twelve hundred dollars across the board. And uh with a rebate for January to give parents proper notice of change. And uh and then further to that as well, we're looking at implementing or yes, implementing the federal provincial childcare program early next year as well, so parents can look forward to that to that.
Perfect, and this is a new program that the province is offering?
It's a, it's a brand-new program. It's it's looking to be implemented. It's it's supposed to be implemented January first. Um, it'll be, we're expecting it to be sort of retroactive because uh the final details won't be known until about mid-January, we're expecting. But yes, it's it's supposed to be going right, right at the beginning of the year.
Okay, perfect. So are there any questions for administration on the twenty twenty-two Early Childhood Development Center fee schedule? Tom?
Just one question.
Absolutely.
And um it might be my just not paying much attention, as much attention as I could. Um, when we had this discussion, uh, the recommendation, the first recommendation that came from administration, uh, it it does this, is is this the recommendation? Um, or and or did we actually make that change?
This is the recommendation from from administration, yes. Yes, it is. And further to that, I know we had discussed uh whether or not we were increasing by uh an amount that we were technically not allowed to. But with we with the clarification, it is a three percent increase from our highest fees of the year. And if we consider the fees we are charging through the the twenty-five-dollar-a-day daycare, this is actually within the allowable amount as well. We found that out on Monday night, so just I just to add that as well. So this is what um administration had recommended.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you for that. So is there a member of Council that would like to make a motion? Rick, thank you.
I'll make the motion that Town Council approve the twenty twenty-two Early Childhood Development Center fee schedule as presented, including a rebate for January of twenty twenty-two in lieu of a month's notice of fee changes.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions, comments, or debate on the motion? None, and I'll ask the question, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And moving along to six point four, twenty twenty-two capital budget. Or no, I guess we're moving back to twenty twenty-two interim operating budget, yeah.
Okay, pursuant to the M G A, section two forty-two, one, Council must adopt an operating budget for each calendar year. This year, Council found it important to work on the strategic plan prior to deliberating budget. When it's possible to, not possible to approve an annual operating budget prior to the start of the calendar year, there is an option under section two forty-two-two of the M G A to approve an interim operating budget for a portion of the calendar year. When an interim budget is passed, it ceases to have any effect when the final operating budget for the calendar year is adopted per M G A section two forty-two-three. Administration proposes that proposes that Council adopt the interim budget based on the twenty twenty-one final operating budget for day-to-day operations, removing any special or operating projects.
Perfect, thank you for that. Are there any questions for administration? Mila?
Yeah, just the, thank you, um, to understand the the process again. So the twenty-five percent from from previous years, um, rating budget, right, that's we are moving forward and, you know, is that coming out from the the taxation from the from the next year?
Uh, I'm I'm not certain, um, where the twenty-five.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I, so I'll just clarify a bit more, yeah. So um, in order to continue operations and not interrupt any operations in the first month or several months of the year, we're proposing just to pass the twenty twenty-one budget as our interim budget, which will allow for normal operations until we can deliberate the final operating budget, at which point this ceases to have any effect. So as soon as we deliberate the final operating budget, then we will set the um final numbers. And then we are proposing to take out any operating or special projects out of the interim budget so that Council has time to deliberate and um make motions on those or vote on those, I guess. Um, so this is just so that we can operate as normal for the first month until we can uh pass an actual final budget. And per your question, it does not affect, this is not affect the tax rate that will be determined in when we deliberate final um budget.
Right, no, I understand that, you know, because what we are, we are looking at is that uh the taxation will be either the same or higher, right? If it is lower, then we would have to figure out efficiencies.
Sure, so the 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 interim, so we're just passing the expenditure budget for twenty twenty-one. So it, this budget does not include or have any um, isn't, there's no interim um tax change or anything like that. This is just passing the twenty twenty-one expenditures for this year so that operating can continue.
If if I could add as well, um, so the the approval of the interim budget allows us to continue to do things like pay the staff, fuel the trucks, pay the utilities. Um, it it is kind of the minimum to continue operations. There's none of the extras. Uh, and it only speaks to that interim period at the beginning of the year before the final budget is passed. Uh, so there would still be an opportunity, it was Council's desire to review operations, change the level of service and um consider anything from a tax decrease to a tax increase. So it doesn't lock you into anything. So um, I just, I wanted that clarity that uh by approving this budget, it doesn't lock you in to say that it's the same or more than last year. Uh, it just says that we're going to continue the operations at the minimum standard uh while Council continues the process of developing a budget.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Can you give me your definition of what special projects are?
Uh, yes, so any projects that are not uh that are one-time projects that are outside of day-to-day operations. So um town revitalization, um uh, um, studies, like studies that we do for various projects. Um, I'm trying to think of ones that are on our list this year. But yeah, like anything that's not a day-to-day expense. It's it's a project but not capital.
So according to the budget, uh, or according to that motion, then none of those projects could be started until after April when the final budget. Is that not hindering the progress of some of those projects?
Uh, the operating projects are are not as time-sensitive as our capital projects are. Um, but either way, we're we're hoping to pass them before April. Hoping to do that in January, maybe early February, hopefully January. Um, but I don't think that this year's operating projects are are that time-sensitive that we would have to pass them now.
Rob?
Uh, so I can probably add to the, the one difficulty with the special projects is is there, there will be a need for administration to plan how they will complete those projects in a reduced timeline. So they won't have the full twelve months to do that. Uh, the difficulty in approving them, though, is that the more additional things that are improved, the narrower the room for Council's decision becomes as we enter into the deliberation process. So we don't want administration proceeding with any projects before Council has had the chance to deliberate and make their decisions about the budget. Um, so we'll, we'll go through the process internally of uh determining how we're gonna modify those timelines to make sure the projects will work.
Just for clarification, so uh such things as perhaps the uh the uh, in regards to the I T lake for the C E D C and and the McKinsey Centers, is that going to stop those projects? Or delay them?
Uh, those projects are on our capital budget and are gonna be approved in the next motion. The ones we talked about on Monday, the audiovisual equipment. Those those projects are on our capital listing and will be approved in the next motion.
Yeah, I I I understand that. It just, I get confused with when we're using twenty-five million, eight hundred seventy-four dollars because that was our twenty twenty-one budget, right?
The expenditure is correct, yes.
So does that mean we cannot exceed that or like, I just need clarification, I'm.
It just means that every, every department, every line, every expense account has essentially the same budget as it had last year. So people can't spend more than their monthly or, well, their budget that was last year. So if if Owen has a a P and G, a professional general account with a certain budget, and he has to play within that budget for the first few months, just the same as he would have last year.
Okay with that?
So if I can just add, I I think we're, i- if you did not put that in to that motion uh and take that half a sentence out, wh- what what does that mean to you? So in other words, it's the explanation of why it's in the motion.
So when you make an interim operating budget motion, you need to provide some parameter on it. Uh, so in this case, we're saying that the the parameter of what we're approving is no more than what twenty twenty-one was, less the one-time purchases. Uh, there are other places that do it differently. You could say that it's um, you know, one quarter of the budget to accommodate the first three months of the year. Um, the difficulty becomes that if, uh, you know, your timing changes, it can create some difficulties. But essentially, what will happen is that although the budget is uh improved interim, uh, if the budget is approved in the first six weeks of the year, you would only have six weeks of those expenses approved under the interim motion. And the remainder of the year, we'd be under the approved operating budget. So it's just to get us through that in-between time, but we need some sort of parameter uh rather than, uh, because we don't want Council saying to administration, yeah, you can spend what you want till we get our budget ready. Because we want to make sure there's lots of room for Council's decisions when the budget deliberations come.
So so by passing the interim budget today, what we're saying, I guess, is that it just gives us a little more flexibility to respond to any changes when we go to pass the um full operating budget in the spring, right? It just gives the departments a little more.
Well, administration can only spend dollars that have been approved. So if we're not approving the final budget till January or February, we have to have an interim interim in place or else we can't do anything starting January first. So this is just to set a budget. And, you know, year over year, the budget will be within a few million of this, if if even probably less uh variability. And so we're just saying is that instead of going through and setting new line-by-line operating amounts, we're just gonna like pass this for now, which was our twenty twenty-one budget, until we can go through and do a final review of all the services and um what Council may like to see. And then the the projects, the operating projects, the reason we're taking them out is because even though they're not capital in nature, they are special projects. There's projects that Council will care to deliberate and on. And they 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 are, it's possible that they will have an impact on the tax rates depending on how many of the operating projects Council chooses. And so so that's why we're taking those out, so that people don't proceed with projects. And then Council decides like, hey, I I don't think I wanted that project to go forward, right? So that's that's why we're, the the operating projects, we are choosing to remove from this motion so that um just the day-to-day operations can go on until final budget can be approved.
Perfect, thank you. Amila?
Thank you. Um, so again, the the concern uh that I have, I think, you know, we are trying to raise is that so we are passing the budget, uh, operation budget as twenty twenty-one, which is the the full total. But the, let's say if, uh, you know, it took three months for us to pass the 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 full budget. So would would the expenses be as exactly as the twenty twenty-one first three months or less by when we hit that, right? So that's, you know, yes, we are, because we are passing the budget for the whole year and there as uh, you know, pass through until we figure it out. But then we are going into the, you know, if it passes in six weeks, then great, right? You know, there won't be much of, but if it is uh three months or more, then um would there be same expenses or less with the the base services that we give?
Yeah, so I like, let me see, like, if 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 we thought of it this way, where we are deliberating an interim budget, let's say we had deliberated interim budget. There's absolutely nothing that prevents Council to make changes in the final budget. So you deliberate, deliberate, you know, come up with all this this interim budget. We'd pass it at probably around the twenty-five million approximately, within, you know, probably ten or so percent. And then in final budget, you would decide you wanted to change something, then it would change and then that new budget would come into effect. The interim budget ceases to exist. So the same as prior years, just instead of, we're saying that in our our whole budget, we're just choosing to have the same budget as twenty twenty-one for now until we can do a new budget. So as soon as, as soon as the final budget has been approved, this budget ceases to exist, the interim. The it's 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 the same as last year. The only difference being that that we didn't deliberate and we didn't change specifics, we didn't deliberate. So the the I I think that the concern is that you're gonna overspend and then you're gonna change, right? Is that the the concern? So the day-to-day operating expenses most likely won't be um for a budget line, probably won't be significantly different, uh, other than some inflationary changes. Any day-to-day operations probably won't be so significantly different that Owen, for example, for one of his budgets, would spend more than the three months and then we would cut the budget back. So unless you would expect to cut someone's budget by an extreme amount for day-to-day operations, then the there would really not be that big of an impact. I don't know if I explained that good, but.
Rob?
Okay, just have one second. Okay, sounds good. Just wanted to make sure we had a good plan. Um, so one of the things I I'm wondering if if Council would find this motion more comfortable, uh, if we qualified what it is that we're approving, that uh, because it is an interim budget, is not meant to service us for the year. If we modified the motion to bring clarity that Council is approving an interim operating budget in the amount of, uh, say fifty percent of the twenty twenty-one operating budget, twenty-five million, so that there's clear intent that it is not for us to spend twenty-five million dollars uh and leave you in a position where uh you don't have that flexibility as you develop the budget. Uh, would that get us closer? Does that increase the comfort level?
Owen?
Yeah, I mean, that number, I think we have, we have to pick a number. I don't think it really matters what that number is. Uh, you know, rather than throwing darts at a board, let's. You know, rather than throwing darts at a board, let's choose the last number that we had and that's the end of twenty-one. That's the best number we can have, right? So as far as I'm concerned, that number doesn't matter. I mean, this is probably the best number. We're not gonna hit twenty-five million dollars in a month, right? So kind of a moot point to me. I, I think this is kind of being overcomplicated. It's, it's just me.
This is more or less an interim motion, right? That when the final budget comes, there'll be the final motion will be made. So just keep that in mind.
No, 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 no manager would want to spend the full amount in first month because that would mean that they would have no spending left for the rest of the year. And I think that's important to understand is that, that unless you're significantly decreasing someone's budget for day-to-day operations, then they would have motivation to stay within this because otherwise they're trapping themselves for the rest of the year as well. So yeah, I think that's important. The intent is not to spend more than what we would on a regular monthly basis.
Bill?
Yeah, the, the twenty-five million is not a concern to me. The, the concern is still to the special projects and I, I'm thinking of salaries and so on. Because I know there, you know, I, I'm not sure when the, uh, collective agreement takes place and so on, but that's not hindering that ability to look after that.
No, no, the special projects is just projects like, um, like, again, like if we were to do, um, the camera project or if we were to do a big town revitalization project, those are the kinds of things that are in the special projects. This, this, and the wages and the collective agreement increase, that falls within normal operation. So it wouldn't hinder that at all. And it's coming into effect January first, twenty twenty-two. Yeah.
Great. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Paulin?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that town council approve the twenty twenty-two interim operating budget in the amount of twenty-five million, eight hundred and seventy-four, six hundred and thirty-five, with the direction that no special projects will start until the twenty twenty-two final operating budget has been approved.
Thank you for that. Are there any comments, questions or debate on the motion? None being seen. I'll ask the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And now moving on to six point four, twenty twenty-two capital budget.
Thank you so much. Pursuant to the municipal government act to section two forty-five, council must adopt a capital budget for each calendar year. Per section two forty-six of the MGA, a capital budget must include the estimated amount for the following. The amount needed to acquire, construct, remove or improve capital property, the anticipated sources and amounts of money to pay the cost referred to in clause A and the amount to be transferred from the operating budget. Administration proposes that council adopts the twenty twenty-two capital budget as presented. And the attachment has the capital budget and, um, I will let Owen speak to the two projects that there was, uh, extensive deliberation on in, in Monday's meeting so that there's clarity on what you're passing. Thank you.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
So I forget the second one, but the first one, of course, being fiftieth Ave. So after deliberating with senior leadership, uh, re- administration feels it's prudent that we're still going to be holding to the recommendation of either the two point one million resurfacing or, uh, rejecting the, or denying the approval altogether. Reason being is I spent quite a bit of time, uh, this last day with our C tech looking at the engineering design and even further down to where it hits the storm retention pond. The problem is even bigger yet. Uh, Sabina, are you able to pull up that map for me that I just sent you? I just sent it to you. Okay, well, while we're waiting, um, so when we looked at the drawings, it really only affects from a hundred and fifty meters west of the St. Anthony's intersection to right to that intersection. So then we got, well, let's look downstream. Let's look to the goal line and see what we have. So we have a nineteen seventy-eight storm system that starts as a two-foot diameter pipe, just hang in there with me. Two-foot diameter pipe, then it goes to a two-and-a-half-foot diameter pipe, then it goes to four feet, then it goes down to two-and-a-half feet, then it goes down to two feet, and then it goes back up to four feet and it has two ninety-degree bends. So.
Yeah, I think you already lost me.
Okay. Okay, so.
Yeah.
So essentially this is the existing storm. This right here is the main overall problem because everything drains to the north. There is no storm system here at all. Everything drains to the north. That's why in a one and two-year, one and five-year storm, you have a river on the south side that goes this way. So this is the overall bigger problem. Now, if we are to start adding catch basins and the five point six million dollar scenario is, by the way, just adding four, one on forty-fourth, forty-fifth, forty-sixth and forty-seventh, just on the south side. So by doing this, by adding this, I would definitely recommend that if we want to go down this rabbit hole, we might as well get a stormwater design model on what we need to do downstream to make this work with installing a new system. Because essentially you start at two feet and they're also recommending that it's two feet back here, by the way. So two feet, then we get to two-and-a-half feet, we hit a ninety, then we have four feet, gets back down to two feet, four feet, two-and-a-half feet, four feet. You can see the problem because when you start having, you imagine a pipe, you have water, liquid going down a pipe. The more ninety-degree bends you have, the more choke points you have, the more restriction you get. So by me wa- or administration wanting to do a proper due diligence mandates that we would have to start all the way back and go this way. Now, the worst of the road, as everybody in this town is aware, is right here. However, the catch basins need to be installed over here. So it is a multi-phase project if we really want to go down this line. And I would recommend that if we do not want to do this resurface from seven eleven here over to Beckett, that it would be prudent, like I said, we would get a stormwater or stormwater model redesign to make sure that we might, to see if we have to do anything different, which I would imagine we're going to have to, or kind of what my thoughts are, is maybe just hang it over here and drop it down and tie in. Either way, it's a massive project. Where, like, when I said to council on Monday, eight million, I no longer feel comfortable with that number even. So that is where we are at with this. So that's why if we want to resurface it and do it now, we can. We do not want to approve it, that's fine too. But talking with the C tech and I said realistically, what are we looking at here? And he says, yep, probably ten plus million if there is some work, some digging up the roads. By the way, there is also some asbestos piping through here for water. And also sanitary, we should probably get it cambered because as we have a massive hole in the middle of a road, if there's any work done there, we'll probably need to do that as well. So this is a bigger overall picture. Now, I just want to point out to council that in twenty twenty-two for asset management, hopefully complete, I want to get a road assessment study done of every road, a hundred and fifty-six kilometers of them. I wouldn't be surprised if there's more hidden gems. This is just one. So I, uh, councillor Gamanna brought up to me, let's, let's prioritize the infrastructure demands and see where we sit. As it stands now, landfill, water distribution, our sass, our south sanitary upgrade, way higher priority than what this is. So to put all of our eggs in this basket, I feel that even more critical projects might be postponed because of this. So this is administration's very, my very candid and transparent comments for council to consider. Because I don't, I don't like beating around the bush. So if there are any questions, please fire away.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Tom?
So I was interested in, in that debate, how it jumped from two million to eight million and sort of it just happened and I, I get all of that, right? Without any kind of science behind it, but there it is. And now I'm, I'm seeing, uh, this, on this big board, a, a bit of a picture of it, right? But, but without engineering or any of those things. So, what I was also thinking about, um, as I was sitting in my chair, I was thinking, we've been dealing with this since nineteen seventy, right? And then I, I look at the, at the width of the road, uh, going down to the cemetery and I, I don't know what kind of a right-of-way we have on the left-hand side of, uh, of that road. So. Yeah, so we've got, we've got lots of driveways going in there, right? But, but if we were to, to come in and dig a deep swell and, and of course put culverts in where the driveways are and run that water and you, right behind where the houses seem to stop, there's a bit of a, like a holding-on marshy area right there in behind. So, and, and when we start to read about new municipalities and how they're building their drainage and things like that, they're not really putting underground pipes or anything like that. They're saying, let's put some green and let's hold the water over here and plant some trees here. That's the new world, which also that new world seems to sort of garner the tension of governments who are people that lend us or give us money, uh, on our grants. So I looked at all of that in my mind and I thought, without any science, I just thought there may be a way to do that, but that's, that's, you know, somebody that has to look at all of that.
That's a real engineer.
So I'm, I'm where you're at in that sense of this does not get a priority for me. And then I, I thought about, I think we have some valves that we have to turn on. But I understand we've already said, yes, go ahead and do that. So that's, that's sort of not here either, right? So we're spending a few million bucks there. So somehow in the end of all of this, I, I thought you as administration, if you came to me and said, we've got, uh, eight million dollars worth of stuff to do and we got ten to spend. So council, you got two to look at. That's all. Don't look at, at the eight, the eights are done, right? You got two million and then you can start to divvy it up and do a two million piece. So then it feels like you're making a decision, um, that's based on some good information and, and you feel better about it. I, that's my two bits.
Thank you for that.
And councillor McGee, more to your point, I, I do believe in doing absolutely everything right to the book, do it right, do it once. However, there's a lot of extenuating priorities out there. We only have so many limited funds. And I mean, this road surface, I do agree with, uh, for every single person that calls me that traverses that road and also a good majority of, of, I believe, council, uh, that road surface is a problem, but this is, uh, this will take a bit of planning, a bit of time, a bit of design. So, yeah, that's kind of where we're at with that.
Rob?
Thank you very much. Uh, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions, uh, Owen, just to make sure that we've got clarity for council here. So there is an acknowledgement that this, uh, two point one million dollar project helps us address the problem, but it is not a fix. And the reason administration is considering that, uh, there was lots of discussion on Monday about what are the big projects coming down the line? And you do have a number of them. And the concern here is that if we, if we make it a priority to fix this, that will impact our ability to take care of those big, uh, number four urgency priorities that are coming down the line. That's the understanding?
That's correct. Um, because Mr. Rosman, I've looked at different scenarios that council has asked me, can we push off the landfill cell construction? Can we, you know, can we look at this? So I went down the landfill construction question. So assuming that we have two maximum three years, but like I said, it depends on how much tonnage we get. If we are in a position that we cannot no longer haul garbage to our landfill, we are then going to have to pay money to haul our garbage to another municipality. I can easily say to haul it to Edson's, uh, other locations, we're probably looking at two hundred dollars a ton. So that's not revenue we're getting, that's revenue we're spending. We get about twelve hundred tonne a month, thereabouts approximately. So you do the math, that's a quarter million dollars a month. I don't feel comfortable pushing off the landfill cell construction. I, I just do not. I don't think it's a good idea. And also I have a prize council about the south sanitary upgrade. Those other issues, I also don't think those should be pushed off for three to five years while we're working on this. If you give me my God's honest opinion.
Mila?
Thank you. Um, just in talking about the road surfacing, uh, Owen, um, so for the bigger picture, the whole project, if we do the concern piece there, would there be any issues that we would have to dig it again or do anything when we do the bigger piece? Or there's not much happening around that piece alone?
You're saying if we just resurface and then we go to look back at the redesign?
Yeah, in the, in the latter year, right? But, you know, can we just do that road servicing, which is like you said, you know, one of the main concerns that currently has.
Okay, um, so essentially the resurfacing would be from corner seven eleven to Beckett Road. So whatever the engineering and storm design would look like, whether it affects this with councillor McGee's idea of underground piping, however, or if we dig up paths and some big roads, whatever that looks like, that's separate. So essentially when we resurface, this part would be affected. So literally we would be digging up the resurfacing.
Okay.
If we were to do so.
Okay, but we, we should be able to do the, the first part without.
That's right.
Right, okay.
Because essentially since nineteen seventy-eight, this road has been acting like it has always been. A one and five-year storm, yeah, it's a bit of a river on the south side. It's, it's lasted this long. You know, historic states that it'll stand there again. Is it optimal? No, but here we are. So, so it is something we can look down the road, which would be my personal recommendation, but this is put before council for their deliberation and approval.
Thank you.
Monica?
So Owen, um, regarding councillor McGee's, um, question about going straight down, um, east, down Fiftieth Avenue, um, the, the zigzagging pipes that are shown here going straight down, it would probably be quite a bit cheaper to do.
You're saying with my, council's approach?
Uh-huh.
My opinion is if.
To go straight?
Sorry?
No, no.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
That would be my first thought when I looked at our civil engineering technologists. That with them is I'm thinking, instead of doing all of this, this works effectively for Aspen View. Let's just bring it over and drop it down. Depending, depending on what the engineers and the studies dictate is the most prudent solution and cost-effective. So that would be where my first thought's at, but that's where the study would need to get done. Then the preliminary design would get done so that we would have timeline, cost, that sort of thing. But that's where my head would go.
So from Fiftieth at that ninety-degree angle going south, where, what's the ending? Where, where's all that water going? What's, what's at the bottom?
Oh, right here?
Yes.
This is Aspen View Pond. So this, this is the storm retention pond. So essentially with all of our storm water that comes from municipalities, councillor Evans knows that world extremely well, is you have to, all the water collected has some sort of level of contaminant, whether it's antifreeze, a little bit of oil, silt, leaves, whichever. It has to settle out for a certain period of time according to Alberta Environment before it's allowed to be released. Now, it inflows here and it outfalls down there into a creek, a county creek and county property, and eventually it finds its way to the river. That is proper stormwater management.
So just a question for councillor McGee. Were you suggesting heading down Fiftieth Avenue, going north into that area, making another pond there or?
Well, I'm merely thinking it's running downhill, figure out the best way without it dangling.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
That's what we get.
Yeah, no, just.
And I.
Finding things, yeah.
And I know where you're heading at with that councillor McGee because the pool is doing something quite similar on the north side. They have essentially like a wet bed, right? The water comes down there and mother nature kind of just slowly absorbs it and it doesn't have to go anywhere. The only thing is with this road, and I believe we've all seen it in a one and five-year storm, that's, that's quite a river to try to catch and absorb. So there'd be definitely a little bit of engineering to be needed there for sure. Because that's a lot of water coming.
Rick?
Owen, have you, have you looked at the, uh, volume of the stormwater on there, its capacity? Do you feel that we're, we're pushing the capacity in there or have you not taken that, that final step there? I know you've gone down.
Yeah.
Quite far here.
Thank you, councillor Evans. I haven't actually looked at the, uh, the control for the stormwater pond. That also definitely begs a question that if we want to look right to the end game, yeah, you're right, just like with Maraw Pond with the new school being built, we are gonna have to look at the capacity to see, do we need another one? Do we have to make it bigger? Absolutely, yeah. I haven't gotten there yet, but I also kind of curious myself. I haven't gotten there yet, but I also kind of curious myself.
I, uh, I agree with you. Obviously, the, there's issues there with, uh, choking down the pipe and opening it up. Uh, you know, it's not functional. I think councillor McGee brings up, uh, uh, a good option to look at. If that current pond is, is not able to take all of the storm water that's produced in that basin, um, you know, then I, we need to look at what room we have there to expand the existing pond? Or do we look elsewhere to, uh, accept that water? And I think straight down and, and to the north side of the road, if it's available, is, is an option. We split that water, uh, and dump it in two ponds, uh, you know, whether that's a, 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 a nice, natural sort of, uh, uh, a pond that we build in the future. But, uh, yeah, this is, this is significant, uh, dollars here. And, and, uh, you know, I'm of the mind that, that we may just have to, uh, put up with the issues that we're seeing, uh, for a few years, uh, until we get a big, the, the entire picture, uh, in front of us in a plan, uh, probably, uh, 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 split up over several years. Um, you know, I also agree with you. We don't want to be digging up that, that whole subdivision there. If we can, if we can go along, uh, uh, a main collector there and, and just shut it down and, and, and do all that work. So this has turned into a, a, a very significant project. And I, I, I just think it's, it's beyond our means to take on this year. I would also, just my opinion, uh, that resurfacing, y- y- you know, I, I'd hate to do it and then, and then start digging that up in, in, in three, four years. Uh, you know, maybe public works can, can find a way to kind of cobble it together there and just know we're going to have to do a little extra work on there to keep it in, in, in reasonable shape and go back to it after we get a significant storm possibly. So just my comments and thoughts on the, the whole big picture now that we, now that we have it, unfortunately.
Thank you. Owen?
Um, yeah, thank you councillor Evans for that. I, uh, I do realize this is frustrating for council, cause I mean, we build this stuff in the late seventies. And I don't believe there, this was before my time. So I don't believe if we did, uh, storm water, uh, design models to that effect. So we're not in a unique situation, right? There's a lot of municipalities out there that face kind of similar scenarios like this. But just, uh, please rest assured that this is something I will not forget. And infrastructure is very prudent that we want to fix everything and fix everything right. However, we can't fix everything all in one term. So we can definitely get there if council has that faith and trust. But it's just, yeah, we, uh, this is a bit of an animal that we got to take a different approach at. So, and I, I hear what you're saying, public works, I mean, of course, can do the crack sealing and the pothole link is now that we have the trailers. Uh, public perception, I mean, that being what I've faced on a daily basis as well as council and, and Mr. Osmond and the rest of the senior leadership team. But, uh, we'll do what we can. The only concern that I have are the two areas on fiftieth Ave where the base is starting to fail a bit. That one gives me a little bit of angst. So if we decide not to do the resurfacing, there would have to be a little bit of remedial work done there, just so that, because you can see in various areas where the road's starting to crown, not a great situation. So something does have to be done, but it's up to council for this particular item.
So without doing like a full, um, uh, like, uh, rehabilitation of that road and full pave, could you just do like a, a skim coat or a top coat over to get by for the next few years? Kind of like what we did on, uh, forty-third there? Prior to the pave?
We can. Um, I don't believe in ten millimeter skin patches because I find that they she, or they sheath off. Um, so it'd have to be a little bit of a mill down and a fill. We can do that, we can absolutely look at that if the base needs to be recourse at all, we can also do that. Um, I mean, we can kind of tackle the problem areas. However, public perception being that is what it is, they might think the whole road might need to get re-skinned. So I just kind of want to make council aware of that as well. But we can do a skin patch like that.
You could, okay. And currently right now, um, as the, um, as the budget is presented, the, the two million is included in the capital budget there.
Yes.
As, as it stands right now.
And just, just sorry, Madam Mayor, just to clarify, that is the resurface from seven eleven to Beckett Road, curves, gutters, swales and a seventy-five millimeter mill and overlay.
Okay. And then there is the opportunity just to perhaps do an overlay or just to do something else?
I can lower it if we just want.
Could lower that if we wanted to. And then when would you be anticipating that, um, since it isn't a top priority, that the studies would be done to look at the, this for the future?
We could be looking at that with the operating budget. We can begin the study process, but it would, it'll take some time, cause it'll be design model first and then preliminary design after. So there would definitely be budgetary implications that we could start pending on the approval for special projects for the operating budget.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Are there any other questions in regards to this matter? Cause I do think you have one more thing else to tell us as well.
Uh, just, uh, we, we had been asked whether we could defer or postpone the landfill cell. And I just, uh, wanted to, yeah, yeah, you did kind of wrap it in there, yeah.
Okay. So is there any questions on that?
Perfect. Any questions on the landfill cell? No, any other questions in regards to the capital budget proposal here? Rick?
So Owen, are, are you still looking at that, looking for us to approve that, that two million? Are you still recommending that we, that we, we resurface that? Or in, in my mind, we should be, we should be taking that off the table and, uh, saving that money or spending it elsewhere if we need to and start moving ahead with the engineering and, and really design work with, with, with this project. So we, we have it shovel ready, I, I think, and in years ahead, i- if we find that there's financing of it, well, grants, et cetera, available, and it makes sense for us to pull the trigger on a, on a portion of this, uh, then we're ready to go. Uh, are, would you rather us approve, uh, and, and maybe this is simply in, in, in operating, but would you rather us approve, uh, the funds required to do all that engineering and, uh, design work?
So I would recommend that we would do like skin patch the worst areas and then do the storm design model and also the fall subsequent engineering.
And is that going to take that, um, that two million? Or can you cover the, that, that, um, uh, bit of repair work, uh, i- in your operating budget and we're approving, um, the monies for that design work?
Thank you councillor Evans. So in the operating budget for roadwork, uh, my budget that's slated for that is a tenth of what it would need for the skin patching. So if you would need numbers right now, unfortunately, uh, making Ms. Thompson's life a little more difficult, I would just need a quick break just to kind of crunch a little bit of numbers. So I can give you a, a bit more of a realistic number than just kind of go on, let's call it seven hundred fifty thousand and call it good. You can just give me a little bit of time to crunch it down.
We can, uh, we can just take this capital project out and then address this in operating and then as a special project, and then you can address it, deliberate and pass it at that time. That is a, an option as well.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Or to leave it in and then that way we have room within that number to make the decision?
Well, if you leave it in, then you're approving this two million dollar project. And if that's not the intent to do a capital project, then my recommendation would be to just pass this with the exception of that project. And then we can come back and get all the information ready for the operating bud- budget and bring that in as a special project. Because if we're just doing some studies and that sort of thing, it wouldn't fall into the capital budget anyways.
I would just be coming to a council meeting, much like the public works Reno, and just coming in and making a, a presentation and a decision item for council is all it would be.
Even if it was for a million dollars?
No, it won't be, no, no, if it's, no, it, it won't be that much for a design model and engineering, it's, it's not going to be that.
And a skin patch and?
It won't be that much.
It won't be that much. Rob?
So I think the, the proposal here would be, we, we would remove it from the capital prod, uh, uh, from the capital budget because it doesn't reflect the project that we're currently talking about. Um, and that we could come back, cause although the capital budget is approved and we proceed with these projects, there is nothing stopping council from considering another capital, uh, or large operating project outside of this process. So once Owen has had an opportunity to bring those costs together, he can bring them back to council separate from the budget process and, uh, and have it approved.
Okay, Tom?
And so I, I always look at this particular budget as, as a live budget anyway. It's, it's continually live, it's going to change tomorrow, it's going to, you're going to have a better idea. Some guy's going to talk to you and you're going to come to us. So it's, it's really just putting a number out there, are we willing to, is this what we want to spend? And we'll see how it runs over the course of the year. That's, that's what it's sort of just a number. And you, it has to reflect in my mind, uh, ongoing planning and thinking and changes and all of the things that go with it. So it's, I'm, I'm there, but if you want to pull it for that reason, I don't have a problem either, but.
Cause more to your point councillor McGee, I've never hit a construction project yet that went exactly the way it was supposed to, the exact way you thought of it. You dig up a road and all of a sudden you have a sinkhole because of a leaking sanitary. Meanwhile, all of a sudden you're coming to council anyways going, I need an extra million because this thing's bigger than we thought. That happens all the time. So I agree with councillor McGee, it is always fluid, always.
Yeah, and there's underground springs everywhere.
Yes, yes.
So are we leaving the number as is or are we going to be changing that number in the motion? Okay, do we want to know what that number is first? Just pulling it, okay.
Yeah, at a later date.
Okay, Bill? Perfect. Are there any comments, question or debate on the motion? Owen?
Maybe a comment. I know, so it's easier to critique than create. Um, let me preface what I'm going to say here. So when we looked at our priorities here for, for the capital budget, you know, we have four, three, two, one urgent to low. Uh, you know, when you said for this cell there, it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars a month, I pretty much forgot what we were talking about there, right? So I wonder if there's a criticality component we should be incorporating into this to help us understand maybe. Yes, maybe it's, it's urgent to Tom, but his urgency is different than yours, right? So I kind of look at it from a criticality perspective as well. Um, cause that kind of helps us, I guess, understand maybe where you guys are coming from as well.
Mr. Osman has a actually good solution with that one.
Adam, so I do have, uh, I worked, uh, and developed a capital project ranking matrix, uh, that uses seven, uh, different categories of measurement and then generates an average score for each project. Um, and when I run that activity, I've done it with all of the general managers at the table. Um, so what that allows is it, it takes away some of the, you know, it, it's reasonable for a general manager to think that their projects are more important. Uh, this helps give some of those extra dynamics so that we understand, uh, just kind of get some of that bias out of the system. But it looks at a number of things like how close the asset is to failing, whether it's a new asset or the repair of something that's existing in the system, the impact, uh, that it has within the community, the amount of grant funding. There's a series of different dynamics, uh, and so as we go forward, uh, we will use, uh, a system like that uh, to help us get a, get a stronger ranking into our capital projects.
Thank you. Oh, did you have a question, Tom? No, Amila?
Thank you. Um, yeah, you know, all of these are important projects, urgent. Uh, we should have done this, uh, prior if we could, right? But, um, the, the discussions and deliberations we had prior to this, um, we are going to be using some of those rating reserves, uh, on some of these capital projects. But my thought goes back again, you know, in next year or, you know, in near future. If we, something comes out of the, the left side, then, you know, we need some funding. Um, or even, you know, going forward, what kind of a sustainability approach do we have for these capital projects? And break fixes as, as you, as you mentioned, right?
Yeah, so we're using operating, or we're, we're, every year that we do capital project, it's really, we'd always use some reserves. For example, like we would never get it totally funded by grants or donations or other means. That there, there's always some level of, of reserves needed. So when we get to the operating, we just make sure that we're contributing to the reserves enough. So, so when we do get to the operating, then we will address how much we are contributing to the reserve. So we're taking some out of our prior reserves. And then when we're dealing with this year's operating, we'll contribute back into reserves. So whether, which reserves that might be, that might vary year to year. But we would always be, you know, if you, if you want to maintain or increase your reserve balance, then you have to be putting in when you're pulling out. So yes, we are taking from reserves to fund some of these, but then we are going to be contributing to reserves in the next year when we are deliberating the operating budget.
Thank you for that. If I may ask a follow-up question. So we have the reserves in, you know, this level now and then we, we are going to take some, um, for these projects. Do we have a projection when, when we'd be getting there and what kind of a plan do we have?
Sure, so our total reserves are sitting at just over ten million projected for the end of twenty twenty-one. And, um, we're pulling just over five hundred thousand for the operating or for these capital projects. And then the question is, is how is the operating budget going to go? And how, what are council's priorities going to be? And, uh, that will tell us how much we're going to be contributing back into the reserves. So we were going to present all that information when we are delivering the, um, operating projects, our operating budget. And, um, the, ultimately the, the, the decision will come down to council and your, um, desire for service levels and services and taxes. And, uh, that will determine how much money will be, if, if we will be contributing more into the reserves than we are pulling or whether we are actually using reserves to get by this year. Does, does that make sense?
Yeah, does, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the fiftieth, uh, avenue east improvements, was that being funded by the gas tax fund?
It was, yes.
And then if we're not going to be doing that project and it was amended, is that money have to be spent in twenty twenty-one or it can be carried over?
We do have some flexibility to carry it forward, but we should probably, we, we, it would be prudent to plan how to use those funds shortly. I would be contacting, uh, municipal affairs just to make sure what the guidelines are around that. But we can carry and save our money for several years. So I don't foresee, it, it definitely won't disappear. Um, the money won't disappear, we can use it for other projects. Or if this project is something we are going to be doing very shortly, then we can just save it for this pro, this larger project.
Okay, so it can be used on other projects, it's not dedicated to this specific?
No, that's correct, yes.
And more to that point, if municipal affairs feels that we need to spend that money by X date and we're not able to execute it on the timeline for fiftieth Ave, there are other, three other roads that, uh, are very simple fixes that we could allocate the funding there and fix.
For the road improvements themselves.
I have contingencies.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, yeah, and I just want to say thank you to administration for all of your hard work. I know that preparing the budget, uh, isn't an easy task and that it takes a lot of time and effort. So it is greatly appreciated and thank you very much for that. And just that, uh, it feels really great to begin the important work and build the framework for the next four years. So, so thanks everybody. And there is a motion on the table, um, with amendments to the capital budget. And I will ask the question, all in favor. That is carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And we will call a ten-minute break at ten thirty-three AM. Okay, so we will call the meeting back to order at 10:47 a.m. And we just moved through some of our decision items and, um, motions were made and we approved the 2022 fee schedule, interim operating budget and the capital budget. And, um, there were several items on, uh, on our projects and things. And I just wanted to, um, mention that one of the things that were on, many special projects were on there. But one of the things that were on that we approved today was a water slide for our new aquatic center. So, very exciting and a bouldering wall. So, uh, yeah, we're very excited about that. And I know that we received a lot of letters of support and, and asking and emails and things from people in the community. So, they'll be very excited to, uh, to hear that the water slide will be part of that. And we also still want to encourage, um, organizations, groups and businesses, individuals in the community to still continue to, uh, be fundraising and, uh, sending their donations to, to, uh, support the water slide and any, um, other pieces of, uh, of this very important project. So, I just wanted to add that before we moved on. And we are going to move on to our decisions item 6.5 Shelter Pod Program Location. Starting with, we have Lola and Emily here with us. So, thank you and welcome.
Good morning. So, um, both, both items are related. So, we'll, we'll, we'll probably speak to them both.
We'll do them at the same, okay? So, 6.5 and 6.6. One is the location and one is the operational cost guaranteed for five years.
If that's okay.
Perfect, yeah.
Perfect, okay. And I'll let Emily, um, get us, get us started.
Okay, um, so this is kind of a carryover from, uh, our last meeting last time we were here. So, just to kind of summarize, uh, we're talking about the shelter pods that would replace our current MAP program as a emergency temporary shelter for our homeless population. In order for this to go forward, uh, we replied for and received a grant, um, from Reaching Home Canada, which is a federal source of funding through the Rural Development Network. A requirement of this grant is that we are able to guarantee the operating costs of this project for five years. That is not something that is within SCSS's capability or mandate. So, we are asking the town, uh, to provide that guarantee, um, by writing a letter, a draft of which, um, you can use or change, um, is attached to this. That will go to the RDN. A sample or an estimated, um, operation cost per month, um, is provided in the notes here. Again, this is just an estimate, uh, because nothing that we know of has been attempted like this. The closest one is in Edson, but theirs is different because theirs is a stick build attached to an already existing building where this is a freestanding renovated, um, oil fields, um, camp shack that we'll be using. So, we, we kind of did the best we could in terms of operating costs, but, uh, this is what we came up with. The other thing to note is that, um, even though you would be providing the guarantee, our intent is that you are not responsible for the ongoing costs of this, uh, project in the long term. We intend to fundraise, we intend to seek sponsorships. Uh, we intend to have this project taken over by a different nonprofit entity which could take that cost on. But in order to receive the funding from, uh, the federal program and RDN, this guarantee needs to be in place and there's no other, um, body that is capable of providing the guarantee at this time.
And if I could just jump in, um, we've already had discussions with, um, the provincial government, with the ministry that provides the funding for our, um, community MAP program. Um, so they are aware that we are making that transition. So, so our hope is that they will then, um, start providing the funding that they provide us for the community MAP program for the operations of the shelter pod program. So, um, that's, that's in the works, but as Emily said, we do need that, um, letter of guarantee just so that our funders know that, um, you know, someone is guaranteeing that, that this project is gonna, is gonna go ahead and operate and not just stand there not being used.
And so, the second part, um, of this, um, request for decision is that, um, we need a location for this shelter pod. Looking around town, we thought that, uh, placing it on a town-owned piece of property would be ideal. It would be protected, uh, from sale, um, kind of unexpectedly. But the beauty of this type of, um, project is that it is mobile. So, should the town wish to sell a piece of property with proper notice, we should be able to move fairly easily. The piece we thought was ideal, um, you'll see in the notes here are, sorry, I'm just looking for it. Lot 2, block 10, uh, Plan 1149 KS or Lot 2, block 10, Plan 1149 KS. The, basically, the, the old yard for the old Public Works site, um, is what you're probably more familiar with it as. Those are technically two different, um, lots, but the same, same functional area. So, either one of those locations would be, um, ideal for, for this program.
And in working with administration, um, um, it, it meets the criteria of, um, well. Um, as Emily mentioned, the shelter pod is, um, mobile. So, should that property be sold, um, then it could move. It's close to RCMP station, um, it's close to power, it's close to fire.
It's central.
Yeah.
And it's away from a residential area.
Yeah.
This is an area that a lot of these folks are already kind of hanging out in. A lot of them are ramaging, scrapping, that type of stuff. A lot of them are ramaging, scrapping, that type of stuff. So they're already in that area, so it wouldn't be bringing something new to that area. But yeah, it's it's central. We don't want to put it out of town or too far away. It it won't get used then. They'll just make their own camps in a more convenient location. But again, as Lola said, it's easily accessible by emergency services. It's an area they're familiar with. It's not a residential area and it has easy access to utilities.
Perfect, thank you very much. So I think that we'll we'll talk about shelter pods program location first. Are there any questions for administration for Laura or Emily? Phil?
I think it's gonna be relevant, my questions are gonna be relevant to both. First of all, how many pods are we talking about?
There'll be seven.
Well, there'll be one building which will contain seven pods.
Yes, yeah, so it's it's a oil field camp shack.
Yeah.
Similar, I mean, that would be used on a level camp.
So it's one person per?
One, well, perhaps two. They are large enough that, say, if it's a couple, then then two could go in one pod.
So maximum would be roughly fourteen people?
Yeah.
And how are you going to determine who the fourteen are going to be?
It's first come, sir, first served.
The cost that you've put down here, that's four thousand sixty two dollars for the total unit.
Yeah.
And is there anything else the town has to supply?
No, that, as we said, that that's that's an estimate. That would provide utilities, that would provide power, that would provide supervision of the program.
What about insurance and liability?
Insurance is on there too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that's in there.
Yeah.
So that, no, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Monica?
When we talked about the pods earlier, you mentioned that there will be porta potties available. And is that included in this budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Emptying, removing, cleaning all that.
Yes, it is, yeah.
And then for the pods too, will they be cleaned or sanitized on a daily basis? Who's responsible for coming in and doing that and?
Yeah.
Yeah, they would be. We contacted a couple cleaning companies to get an estimate of what it would take. As the pods are designed to be like very, very low maintenance, like they'll be entirely walled with like coating that basically stuff can't stick to. So if you really needed to, you could come in and basically hose the place out. It's not gonna take a lot of cleaning. There'll be mats in there, but we're not providing any of the blankets that we would in our in our shelter. They'll be maintained at a comfortable temperature, so you don't really need need the blankets. But yeah, that includes the cleaning. We contacted a couple cleaning companies to get an estimate of how long they thought it would take to come in and clean out, and and that's the the fifteen hundred dollars a month line item there.
And when are you anticipating that the location would be ready and that the pods would be be moved to the to the location with approved?
So timeline, we we until we have the location secured and the letter of support, we've we've been unable to go ahead and order the shelter pod to go ahead and and start being constructed. So we would anticipate that we would run the community map program this winter, of which we do have funding for. And and now, just of note, we are up to full staff now, so we're running seven days a week. And and I do have to.
Starting the twenty fourth.
Starting the twenty fifth. And I do have to add that thanks to Emily, Emily is actually spending her Christmas Eve doing a shift at the MAP program to ensure that it's able to be open in that cold temperature. So.
Thank you.
So we would we would need to run the community map program this winter. But then the shelter pods should be ready for springtime. And and they they would have the ability to be to be used year round should the need be that people are looking for shelter year round as opposed to just winter times and shelter. And then next winter time, this would replace the community map program. So we wouldn't be hiring staff and waiting for provincial funding and and whatnot.
Perfect, and then so there won't be, now that you have full staff for the MAP program, no matter what the temperatures drop to, we'll still be able to continue through the winter to run that.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, wonderful to hear. Amila?
Thank you. Just from my understanding, so, you know, we have the grant from A R D N and we'll be setting up the shelter ports and all that and the the cost associated with operating it. Is there, you know, you mentioning about fundraising and, you know, doing other projects as well. So is there a community organization that's kind of helping us on that piece as well and and operations going forward?
Um, no, so we do have the homelessness and poverty reduction team. We are looking at some things in in the future in terms of increasing their ability to do fundraising. So we'll be actually be coming back in January to G and P to talk a little bit further about the team itself and and what the team currently is. But but yeah, the the R D N funding is strictly capital. So right now, we're just looking for that operational dollars.
Okay, thank you. Just a follow up about the MAP program now, how much of a utilization do we have there? And once we get this up and running, as you mentioned, you know, there will be a transition hopefully to here. Would this be enough for what the utilization that we have with the MAP program?
Um, we've had no more than five so far.
This one, yeah, it could be. Last time we were running MAP program at full capacity, the most we ever had in a single night was eight. We had about twenty two individual clients over the course of that winter, but no more than eight at any given time. So I think this should be a fairly good replacement for the MAP program. And because we may be able to do double capacity in each of the pods, this would actually provide more capacity than the MAP program does and in a more comfortable environment for our clients because they have a little more privacy and autonomy.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions, Tom?
So seven echo trailers.
One, one, one echo trailer with seven rooms.
I missed it completely.
Yeah, one, one trailer.
Seven trailers in there, two people in each trailer, that's fourteen.
Yeah, one, one trailer, seven rooms.
Yeah.
All right, and and, okay, so and where am I putting my my buggy stuff? Do I take it in there?
Um, you're leaving it outside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Leave it outside?
Yeah.
Fenced? Nobody gonna steal my stuff?
Their stuff is equally likely to be stolen wherever they're at.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's it's a risk that people run. Unfortunately, being homeless and there have been in the past when we've discussed like trying to have like lockers or something for people to to keep their stuff safe. But that's that's not part of this discussion right now.
Having said, having said that, by coming up with a a more permanent solution, you know, maybe the team can start looking at, you know, some of those other other challenges that they face. That the first challenge being shelter itself.
Yeah.
Right, given the room that we have there, then it may be feasible to do a chain link fence and park your stuff.
It could, yeah.
Somehow.
Yeah, have like almost, yeah.
Okay, so then that takes me to that budget, four thousand bucks will fill that, will work for that trailer, right?
Yes, it should.
So and we're gonna be open for six months?
We could be open all year.
We we could be.
Yeah.
And we and we don't know what the use would be in the summer time. Edson was open all summer. The shelter pod program was was open all summer at Edson, so we would have the ability to be open year round. So then, you know, perhaps folks might decide to stay there as opposed to setting up a camp in in, you know, down by the landfill.
Yeah, and and who would make that decision? This is not, it's not our decision, is it?
No, no, I I would say, I would say this this would, this first year would be a pilot and and we would, you know, keep it open. And and if it became, if it started not being used, then we would look at closing it.
Okay. All right, and then the the idea is to go out and talk to the public. We have the dog grouping right behind it and.
Yes.
Things like that, but.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Bill?
Yeah, okay, Edsons have their program in effect for a while now. Have you talked to them and found out what the pros and the cons are?
Yeah, we we have had discussions, a couple of, actually, Hackhampton, who was on our committee, did go to Edson and took a video, which unfortunately, we we tried to show last council meeting and and it didn't work. But he has been to to Edson.
He mailed out to.
Yeah, we did get, we did.
Yeah, yes, yes.
I emailed it.
Yeah, so so he was there and we've had a couple of Zoom calls and we have talked to the team there, so we're we're aware that, you know, there's there's gonna there's gonna be some hiccups perhaps, but we're certainly looking to them to for, you know, their experience so that we can get ahead of some of those things. And one of the things that they did say was that they had wished, because theirs was a stick build, they'd wished that they had built their units larger because they're only coded to have one person. So so with that advice, our units are gonna have room for two. So it's actually Sergeant Chris Delisle, who used to be in our detachment, is very key in that program. So we've met with him a couple of occasions. But they've only been open till spring, so or since spring, so they haven't been through a winter yet, so they're learning too.
Is there any concerns from Public Works in regards to location?
Owen?
Yeah, I've chatted with staff, Sergeant Matthews about this too, and she thinks it's a fantastic location. Clearly, it is, I mean, it's it's close to them, it's close to, like you said, everything else that we need to be close to. So that's good. One question I did have, though, just to clarify, you said off the at the beginning of what you started talking about there, you said you had conversations about the MAP funding and extending that to the shelter pods, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, and then, so you didn't have any sort of response saying, yes, we'll do it? It's just a, hey, I'm planting the seed and?
Um, with provincial government, as as we've experienced, it's it's year to year with them. We have no assurance for funding for MAP program or any kind of funding next year. However, the seeds have been planted that this this would be a much cheaper request than the community MAP program has been. So our longstanding relationship with them, I hope that they would continue to provide funding for us to offer this program instead of the community MAP program.
And so does Red Deer get any funding through the MAP program for their shelter pods?
Yes, yeah, we're we're actually the smallest community, the rest, the rest are, the rest are cities, as as far as I know. So it's Red Deer, Lethbridge.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean Red Deer, I meant Edson. I don't know why I said Red Deer.
No.
No, Edson, no, Edson is not, Edson's not, Edson, where are they getting their operational funding from?
For their shelter pods, they got, they were partially funded by the town and partially funded by.
Yes.
Or R D N, sorry.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's where all their funding came from. And now it was being operated by their recycling facility, was kind of taking on the the day to day operation of it. But I believe it's just been handed over to its own kind of nonprofit society, like that just happened. I think I saw the news article on maybe Thursday or Friday.
Perfect, thank you. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Rick?
Well, I'll, I'm assuming that the lot two is the is the preferred location as the first, the first motion.
Yeah, there's two motions up there, so.
Yeah, I mean, they're right beside each other, but I'm assuming that's the that's the preference. Okay, I'll make the motion that council approved, excuse me. Lot two, block ten, plan eleven forty nine K S, fifty three oh nine fifty four street as the location for the shelter pods.
Perfect, thank you for that. Are there any comments, questions or debate on the motion? No, and I'll ask all in favor. That is carried, and we will move on to a decision item, the next one, which is the five year operating cost guarantee. So is there anything that you just wanted to add before I ask if anybody has any questions for you?
Um, no, just, you know, I I think we've went over that the intent is that that council will not have to come up with that cost in the budget. The intent is that we'll we'll do everything we can to make sure that those costs are covered from elsewhere.
Okay, perfect, so are there any questions for administration on this this decision? Tom?
I was thinking, why did I get confused with seven trailers? But somewhere along the line, somebody said, well, there's gonna be this kind of a thing and then there's gonna be pods. And we keep saying pods, and I'm thinking one trailer does not make a podza. So and I don't know what's what the inside of the building, like, I just have no contemplation.
It's a camp shack, like it's oil field camp shack.
Right, and inside the middle of it is gonna be what?
No, nothing, it's just seven pods.
If you've ever seen like aerial photos of Fort McMurray and you see trailer upon trailer upon trailer, usually they're connected together in groups of seven. So you'll have seven trailers with seven rooms each, so you'll have forty nine rooms and then one like washroom. So that's generally how they operate. We are taking one of those trailers that has seven rooms.
And.
And we're calling the pods the individual rooms, that's why they're called.
Let's call them rooms. We only call them pods because that's what Edson called their.
Well, they're, but they call their rooms pods.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, got it, got it.
Yeah.
I got all that, but then there was some description of 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 the middle or something all comes together into one. They all come together, are they individuals?
One trailer.
Or are they going?
Yeah, they all open to the outside.
They just go in their individual unit.
Okay, I'll be able to explain that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're gonna stop calling it pods.
Okay, any other questions for administration? No, okay, can I, oh, Monica? Oh, Tom, you have to shut your mic off.
Just a question, so whoever, there's seven rooms accommodating fourteen people or so. Where is the person that's volunteering or supervising going to stay?
At home with their cell phone.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's not physically supervised on site. People are given access by pushing like an intercom button. The phone will be answered by a volunteer or staff member to start off with. They'll give their name and they're able to remotely unlock one of the pods, one of the rooms, so that the person can enter. And then that pod is shown as occupied and then the person with the phone stays available between certain hours. We're thinking between eight and eleven P M or until all the pods are occupied.
So let's say one of the occupants goes in, has an app, then has to go use the outside bathroom. They have to buzz the person again to get in or?
They can either prop the door open or again, yes, they can, they can re buzz to get back in. I believe Edson for a while was using like a PIN code system. They would put the the PIN to the room inside the room so that once somebody had been given access to the room, they would have the PIN for that room so they could reenter for that night. And then the pins would be changed on a rotating basis.
So seeing how there's not gonna be somebody watching or supervising at all times, is there some kind of surveillance?
Yes.
In place already and, okay, all right.
There's no other question, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Before that, I will go to. Okay, thank you, Owen, so which which building is available? Okay, okay, so Owen had just suggested that the Public Works building is vacant if it was needed for for a temporary solution till then. Okay, so I will ask, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Monica? That's the one you wanna make? Sure.
Um, so I make the motion to provide the guarantee that the town of Dayton Valley will cover the operational costs of the shelter pod program for the first five years of operating operations and to send the letter as written stating as much to the grant administrators providers.
Perfect, thank you for that. Are there any questions, comments or debate? Tom?
All right, what if I get the trailer for free? What am I gonna do with the eighty grand?
Uh.
It'll still be, uh, there's still renovation cost.
Yes, but and and unfortunately, how the grant works, we don't have the eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We need to send them receipts and invoice as we go.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, if we get the trailer for free.
Yeah, that's just money we don't get.
Yeah.
All right, the Public Works office yard, the building is is there?
bit building is, is there, empty, heated. Why aren't we sending in a drywaller? Make seven rooms, is it, is it gonna be, maybe that's, then somebody has to watch it.
Yeah, my immediate thought would be is that, again, and then it's not portable, because then if you wanna do something else with that property later on.
Yeah.
We'd have to completely move and start all over again. This way, if you want us out of there eventually, we can just pick up and move with warning.
Perfect, okay, thank you. So if there's no other questions, I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Okay, thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Moving on to six point, 6.7, Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board appointment. Thank you for, for waiting so patiently. And, uh, if you would like to come on down, oh, this is Rob, this is not you, you're just here to watch. Absolutely, thanks Doug.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, so we have two items today, uh, with regard to, uh, library board appointments. The first one is, uh, an appointment of the Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board. Uh, the, uh, Brazu County, uh, has a organizational meeting, much the same as the town, uh, where they appoint a member to the library board. Uh, however, it was brought to our attention that it is a requirement of Libraries Act that all appointments to the board be approved by the municipal government where the library is resident. So although the Brazu County has appointed their member, the town has to confirm them to the board. Uh, so the first is simply a motion, uh, to appoint Counselor Randy Schwab, to the Drayton Valley Municipal, uh, Library Board, uh, in accordance with the Library Act and town bylaws.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any questions for administration? Bill?
He's the devil's advocate, what if we said no?
So according to the Libraries Act, uh, the Counselor Schwab would not have a seat on the board.
Listen to that laugh. Emila?
I'm just gonna make a motion, I think.
Thanks for that. Doug is, is saying that he could sit with the board, but he, but he wouldn't have a vote. Uh, is there a council that would like to make a motion? Thank you.
Thank you, uh, I'll make that motion without any controversy, that Counselor, Prince Brazu County Counselor Randy Schwab to the Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board for a term ending October 31st, 2022, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions, or debate on the motion? I would just like to add that I am very happy about that motion that is made and very excited to see, uh, if this is carried, Randy to be sitting on that board. And I will ask if there is no debate or comments or questions, all in favor? That is carried, thank you, and moving on to the next motion.
All right, uh, the second motion, uh, is, is with regards to the appointment, uh, to somebody to the Yellowhead Regional Library Board. Uh, in the past, uh, it has been the member of council that sat on the Drayton Valley Library Board, uh, that also filled this role, however, uh, I believe it's just the last year or maybe the last two years, uh, where we had somebody from, someone other than the counselor from the Drayton Valley Library Board occupy that position for us. We are once again needing to appoint somebody to the Yellowhead Regional Library Board. In conversation with Doug, I think there is interest in having, uh, council once again resume their, their spot on the Yellowhead Regional Library Board. However, uh, understanding that, uh, following the election, uh, we have some new people in those roles and they might want to establish a level of comfort with the library board before they're, uh, take up the seat on the regional. Um, the, uh, the member who has been filling that role for us in the library board, the Yellowhead Regional Library Board, uh, has volunteered to do that again for another year, uh, but would require appointment.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any questions for administration? Emila?
Thank you, no, it's, it's not a question, but just a, just a comment. I, I think, like you mentioned, Rob, it's prudent that, uh, the counselor who's sitting on the library board continues that it's, I don't think it's a huge commitment, I think they have meetings, um, every three months, right? So, you know, three times a year, okay, so it's not a huge commitment, and then having that continuity from local library board to, uh, the Yellowhead, I think there's, uh, uh, value to that, so, just my two cents.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, that I, I agree, I did sit on, um, both, uh, the, the library board and the Yellowhead Regional Library Board, so I enjoyed sitting on both, and I thought that there was value of, of sitting on both of these, definitely. Rick?
Well, I'm getting eyeballs from a couple of different people here, because obviously I'm on the, the board even though I haven't attended a meeting yet. Uh, why did we stop doing it? What was the reasoning?
May I answer that? Because it was me. Uh, because I had no interest in it, and I, I found it very demanding of my time with all the emails and everything that was coming. And, uh, I thought it would be more applicable to somebody that was on the board, and, and there was some continuity and, and understood and knew what was happening.
I can just add to that too, when I sat on both, that there, there was a, an overwhelming amount of emails that did come, but, um, I would, uh, not really pay attention to the emails because whatever was of importance or that really, um, I guess reflected on our library here, Doug would bring to my attention and he would send an email and, and say, this is of importance, you know, be aware of this. Otherwise, it was just kind of to keep you in the loop, just information that was coming, so it's not needed or necessary that you need it to be responding or there was an action behind the emails, there just, there was a lot, right? And I think they're being sent out to everybody, I'm not sure if there was anything that you wanted to add, Doug, or, or Rob? You can come up to the mic if you think that there's anything that you'd wanna add since, uh, Rick has not been, um, to a meeting yet and he's eagerly awaiting.
So, Rick, uh, new on council, it is overwhelming. I would like to see you get into a comfortable position with the library board before you take on everything, because it's, it's too much. Um, and if you would like to do it, you're those two, yeah. This is just a suggestion that Pat is comfortable continuing representing this municipality on the Yellowhead Board, but, uh, you're welcome to say, I would like to do both.
Well, I, I, I guess I'm of the mind of, um, you know, I'll, I'll admit, I'm on two other boards as well. So, if, if, uh, Pat is comfortable in that position and we feel that, uh, she's covering all the bases for us, uh, I think I'd probably be more comfortable myself, um, with some time on our own board, to get up to speed before I, before I committed to the additional work. Uh, i- is there anything? Is this, uh, appointment for, uh, a year, say in six months, if things are going along pretty good and I feel I can take it on? Could we change it at that point in time, or is it a yearly, pretty much a yearly thing? Okay, thank you. I, I think, uh, yeah, for myself, I'd, I'd rather leave things the way they are, appoint Pat for now.
Would you like to make a motion then?
I, I, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make the motion that, uh, council appoint Pat Adamson to the Yellowhead Regional Library Board for the town of Drayton Valley. And for a term ending October 31st, 2022.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any comments, questions, or debate on the motion? None? All in favor? That is carried, thank you very much for that, and that is the end of our decision items, and we are moving into our department reports. First up, we have planning and development. Ken, if you wanna make your way down, please, thank you. Good morning again.
Thank you, worship council, I'll try to be as brief as I can. Basically, three items on the report, uh, just wanna report a little bit on the Deer Meadows ASP. Uh, we met with them on 24, on November 24th to discuss some servicing options with them, and I met with them on December 2nd as well. They've picked, uh, an option and now they're pricing it out, so, uh, it is moving forward. Um, we talked about the proposed Opportunity Home Treatment Recovery Center already, so I won't mention anything more there. And I also attended the Headwaters Alliance Steering Committee meeting with Counselor Evans on December 2nd, and, uh, that, uh, he reported on that at a previous council, so I won't say anything more about that.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ken?
Quick question regarding Deer Meadows, um, so the ball is in their court or our court?
They're pricing out, uh, a servicing option from an east manhole, and so they're gonna be looking at the feasibility of those costs versus the number of lots they're proposing.
All right, and so in the midst of the new high, high school going in, or the new school going in, um, we talked a little bit about the Maraw Pond, which is just a little bit, uh, west of them, and then we talked a little bit about how we're gonna move water that way somehow, and does that, does that tie into any of the conversations you might have with them, given them?
Um, at this time, no, uh, I think Owen's got everything figured out in terms of the stormwater pond for the, for that line. Um, their, their concern is not really stormwater, it's sewer and water.
Right, so.
They, they didn't like the western option of coming in from the west, the southwest. So, cause that, uh, so they, they've opted for the northeast manhole option.
And it's in their ballpark, Christ out.
Yep, they're, they're working on it, and they'll, we've been talking, I'm sure we'll continue to have more discussions.
Thanks.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Moving on to 7.2, infrastructure and engineering, Owen?
Good morning again, council. Um, just to shed a little bit more light quickly on, uh, Mr. White's presentation, so, yeah, the stormwater wa- was never an issue, and, uh, the eastern, northeastern manhole that was kind of decided upon, I've already gotten approval by the county because it does also kind of affect their side on the boundary. But I did get approval for my counterparts, so that was a nice collaborative effort, a little bit of an atypical approach, but as I kind of showed you guys earlier with budget, there's a little bit of atypical issues kind of throughout town, but we can slowly work through them. All right, so now for my, uh, presentation, uh, I'll get to snow removal at the end because I'm sure there'll be, uh, seven different questions. So for the landfill, the landfill operations RFP has received yen to compliant bid, or received two compliant bid submissions, and I've made a selection based on the RFP scoring criteria. The award letter has already been dispensed, and I'm just waiting to hear back from the contractor for an actual signing date. I did give some availabilities, and I'm just waiting to hear back from that, uh, just so that, that'll be signed. Utilities, uh, the reservoir pumps, two of them, have been ordered and will arrive in 12 to 16 weeks. So between the time that I presented to council and till the time it was approved, it basically gained an extra four weeks due to apparent supply chain issues and so on and so forth. So that is rolling forward, so we are actively working on that. Uh, it says here with the raw water intake basin, it's fluctuating between 0.6 meters to 1.2 meters. The utility supervisor did relate to me that they're having a bit of an ice dam upriver on the North Saskatchewan, and, uh, Transalta will most likely be releasing some water from the dam in an attempt to try to, uh, break it up. Uh, so we're already sitting at about three meters in the intake pond, so now the game is, we just gotta make sure that we don't have a waterfall coming over our dike because with ice flows and surge water trying to break it up, it gets a little bit interesting. So before we were running low, now we're gonna be running high, so. Uh, so that being that, uh, the River Studer, a river study internship through the U of A, uh, is working hard on researching North Saskatchewan River Shift to compile data for upcoming raw water intake engineering study. I'm happy to state that that study is, or her report is actually done. Uh, I was mentioning to a counselor about that here not too long ago, so in January, I wanna speak to her to see if she'd be willing to come in front of council to kind of give her thoughts on it. It's actually a very interesting read, um, I think council will be quite impressed with it. Uh, Public Works, the renovations are now 95% complete, and, uh, they're pretty much finished the majority of the interior transition, outbuildings and exterior at the West Yard will be moved in spring, obviously, well, for obvious reasons. Uh, my CT is currently working on updating our engineering design standards to bring them from the 70s and 80s back up to the 21st century, so that'll be definitely a, a winter-long project for him. And now with approval, we'll be looking at starting to, uh, formulate our RFPs and that to get ready to roll for what we're approved for for next year. Facilities maintenance, uh, he just went through the janitorial contract submissions and he has awarded it to a company. So they'll be starting January 1st to do all the janitorial for all of the town facilities that are listed. And the Discovery Park outdoor ring puck board installation was completed last Friday. So unfortunately, with, uh, a little bit of a setback there, plus the cold weather and plus the snow now, Public Works is, uh, struggling a fair bit to try to get this, uh, ice ready to go, all three areas. Uh, because now, I mean, obviously, as we're driving in, we can see that there's a whole higher priority happening right now. So unfortunately, we'll get to the ice rinks, but right now roads and sidewalks are gonna have to be the priority, just to let the council aware. To let them know and to let you guys know about the snow removal, so today, uh, we're already rolling everything off that we can to the side. We're doing some rec facilities, the other rec facilities will be done tonight. There is also a midnight run planned for the downtown core, and we'll be starting, we have the seasonal road ban posted, or at least we should be. Uh, Public Works manager is talking to Ms. Stone, uh, so that we'll start early, we'll get the priority ones done, and hopefully we'll have the priority du- twos done before Christmas. After council meeting, I will be going out with the Public Works manager to be doing some, uh, depth testing for compaction in the residential. I'm sensing with the amount of snow that we've gotten already, plus the original pack, plus the other five to seven centimeters are still supposed to fall today, uh, five to seven, by tomorrow. Um, after Christmas, we'll probably be finishing the rest of the town off and doing the whole thing. Just to let council know, we're already pretty close to our limit for snow removal budget, so this one's definitely gonna push us over. So I just want council to be very prepared with that, going, we are going over budget on this one. So, so hopefully in operating budget, we can have a discussion when I bring this norm mobile policy back for review on different scenarios versus Volkswagen, uh, Cadillac, and maybe I might even throw a Lamborghini, uh, scenario in there as well, and do some cost scenarios. Even though the email response I got back from council, there seems to be a, a very big appetite for Volkswagens I've seen, so, anyways, as a side note, so.
They're fighting for the top spot with Toyota right now, I, I said they were second, I believe they're number one right now in the world. So we might wanna, we might wanna, uh, bump up our service to a Volkswagen service.
Okay, I can rearrange the scenarios, Madam Mayor. Does council have any questions for myself?
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for Owen? Bill?
Owen, could you, uh, explain or, or inform us as to what is the difference in the landfill operations now that a new contract has been issued to the same provider, I understood?
Sure.
So i- is there gonna be any difference that the service that he's providing now?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Ballas, I'm glad you actually asked that question. So, before, priorly, just to give you a quick historical, they were, they ran the scale house, they ran environmental compliance, and they ran the landfill, uh, operation. Since there was no contract, things were being ran quite fast and loose, uh, costs were a little bit out of control. Now we've taken back the scale house, recycling, um, is actually with a different provider now, uh, that I'll be saving about $50,000 a year down that avenue. And also with the landfill operation, there is a lot more stringent guidelines, which follows a lot more with our AEP approval, like we need to have more litter fences, we need to be actually using them. Uh, with the, uh, alternative daily cover, they, they're called grizzly plates, so at the end of every day, you're supposed to have either a cover or a dirt cover to prevent scavenging birds, you know, wind, you know, flying it all apart. That historically was never done, it will be done now with this contract, and there's actually, and if, if yourself remembers, there's actually a fine structure in that RFP, so that if the contractor is not meeting the minimum expectation, we actually have the ability to dock off what we owe them. So it's definitely a lot more, um, accountability and a little more stricter guidelines on basically, you know, the fox not running the hen house anymore, so to kind of high level it for you.
Perfect, any other questions? Emila?
Yeah, thank you, um, just totally understand the, the priorities are, that the roads. Just totally understand the the priorities are the the roads and and everything else. But just to get a feel about the the outside outdoor rings, what status do we have them and is there opportunity before the holidays?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Gomana. So unfortunately, Parks is really trying to get it done. As its status now, even if we're to clean off the snow right now, there's still not an ice, not enough ice depth to skate. So like I was saying to Mr. Osmond, maybe not for Christmas Day or Boxing Day. But hopefully after, I can wrangle a couple people that we can start doing these three areas and kind of do that at the same time while we're doing residential. Because the surge for snow removal is initially at the beginning stages when we're hard doing the sidewalks, hard doing the roads, but the sidewalks doesn't take as long as it does the roads. So if we're allowed to do the roads as designed with the current snow removal policy, then that allows Park to work on the flooding while Public Works still works on the rest of the residential roads.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'm sure our community will appreciate if we could get that done.
Yeah, we will.
The the other piece about the snow removal, I think we had a discussion prior as well, the the road to the hospital. And it seems that sometimes it gets done all the way up to the other end and sometimes it doesn't. I'm not sure, you know, the reasoning behind, you know, we just do after the hospital. Yeah, I can understand, but you know, I think it's prudent that if we do the whole thing. So, you know, Cruz doesn't have to come back again.
Right. So just to kind of clarify on that, Counselor Gomana, is the reason why it stops at the reservoir road is not only to encompass the emergency medical route, because it actually starts from the ambulance station, goes by the old Public Works shop, which is great that F C S S picked that location. And then runs right by the hospital. But also it ends at the reservoir because that's right now, as you guys know, our main primary source of water distribution. Now, when we start, and that is actually how the map and the policy was created and was approved by council. When we start dipping outside of our lane when it comes to the route priorities, then you're gonna have, and we've actually seen this last winter, that other areas of residential go, oh, so they, that residential area gets to be done every single time as a priority one and we don't. So then Public Works starts getting complaints ongoing. So what's fair for one is not fair for the other residential areas or quadrants. So that created a bit of an issue last winter. So when I come to, or when administration comes with an amended snow removal policy, we can talk about it and we'll have some maps and different priorities and then council can deliberate with us on what they would like to see moving forward. So unfortunately, that's a bit of a hinge point. Right, right. I I understand because I I personally get a lot of calls, no, no, or the same as the front desk, Public Works. Everybody would like to be priority one. And we can get there with more money, more people, more equipment, but it's just, we can't make everybody priority one.
I I think just with that particular piece on going up to Madison Avenue is that the snow removal, the trucks have always stopped just prior to the bend and it's not even a block. And I guess I think that when we looked at or maybe residents look at it, it just seems that it would make sense to just continue to push the snow because that road ends there. And then that's where the truck would turn around and then head back because that is the hospital route. So it seems to just kind of go up to where the bend goes, it stops, and then usually there's about an eight to ten inch ridge that will start to build up because you can see how abruptly. And so I think that just over the years that it has been brought always is that why wouldn't the grader just continue to push it to the very end because it's a dead end, turn around and come back? So I don't know if it's, and and I mean, I understand that you're saying there is priorities and that's just not the priority. I just think that it's just the the way that we kind of have always viewed it is it's kind of like it stops right in the middle of the road and then.
Yeah. And and from an optics point of view, I can I can see people struggling with that. And when we we kind of tickled in a different direction with snow removal last year, it was actually the cul-de-sacs behind the hospital that probably flamed on me the worst, being called some very colorful names. And so it's it's, you know, there's kind of a fine balance there that people kind of don't understand. So I mean, we can definitely take that into account. And when we bring the amended snow policy, we can, we can definitely talk about it.
Perfect, thank you. Rob, did you have one to add something?
No, once council is finished with Owen's update, I'm just going to ask if we could move in camera. I have Kelsey Baker Brooks, our lawyer from R M R F for the arbitration to provide an update. And she has to unfortunately leave the meeting at noon. And so I'd like to make sure that we fit her in beforehand. So if we could move in camera.
Do we need to call a break then? Or can we still do it since it's not on the agenda? How do we?
Well, it was going to form part of the C A O debrief.
Oh, okay, so we'll.
Just start the the debrief.
We'll just bump that up. Okay, perfect. Are there any other questions for Owen? No? Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for that. So then we will jump ahead to seven point seven, the C A O administration, and we will move into closed for this presentation and I will I think I need to have Bill still here. So I will ask, I will ask for a council to to move us into closed.
So moved.
Thank you, Emila. Emila has moved us into closed.